All right, thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody this evening. We're going to start in our committee meeting. First off, I'd like to congratulate the mayor for his victory yesterday. He's been good hands, too. I've been doing that for years, so thank you. All right, so this evening we have three first readings, no second, third, or pending. And when we get into committee, Judy will not be here tonight, so I'm going to go ahead and open the Streets and Drainage Committee at call six oh two. The members present for Judy. We have a resolution number twenty-one R dash seventy-three. The resolution wanted the mayor to adopt a transportation alternative set aside TASA funds programmed by the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study AMAT to improve certain streets and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passing. Want to talk about this?
Yeah, this is, in two thousand and eleven, there was a proposal and plan done that, in concert with the city of Green, and to see about extending a trail from Nimsilla into the state park, and then from the state park down to the Ohioic and Eric now, Topeka. As you know, that's a statewide venture, one hundred and ten mile trail up in many of the even down there to that Topeka Trail, and it's beautiful. So, they're looking for as many ways as they can to connect the state park and the parks and connect the people. So, that study was done in two thousand and eleven. Nothing happened with it, there was no action on it. We did obtain a grant to update that plan with GPD, and so they're in the process of doing that now. And then this step would be to seek funding to actually build that trail, not the Nimsilla portion of it, but just from the state park to the Topeka. This will be a very slow process. This resolution just authorizes us to make the application. We'll make the application at this point in time. We're not necessarily optimistic that we'll get it at this point, but somewhere down the road, we may. Even if the, if we, if they grant, if the proposal and grant application was granted, it'd probably be twenty twenty-four before they would build. So, this is something, and then we, of course, like all these grant applications, we'd have the choice to decide every one except that the way they don't. It would be a significant expenditure, it's a couple million dollar project, it's an eighty-twenty split. We've had some success when it comes to our twenty percent and getting funding from other sources to cover that, but that's way down the road, that part. This part just puts us in the, puts us in the ballpark with this, allows us to apply for the grant and get that part in process.
This is nothing new for us, applying for grants, making legislation, apply for grants, and then it comes back to us if we do, and we act on them. So, I want to make a motion that we wave the three readings on that when it comes up. All right, I have nothing else for Streets and Drainage, I'm going to close it, and we call it six oh five. We'll move into Finance Committee, Jim.
We'll open Finance Committee at six oh five. A resolution twenty-one R seventy-four, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into Ingrid Pacific Plus for initial design and hosting of the facility website and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. This is going to be seventeen thousand five hundred and one pending, and Civic Plus is a corporation that does this all over the country, they have four thousand clients, they pretty much have every city all around us, Barberton, Green, Hudson, Cowmish, Fairlawn, et cetera. And you go look at their website, it's not cookie cutter, they seem to design it pretty nicely for each individual community. Anything you want to add, Mr. Anderson?
No, we looked at Gov Office is the other major vendor in this area, and there was a third vendor as well, and I don't have the name of that vendor. Their proposal was twenty-two thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. Gov Office was a little bit more expensive than Civic Plus, but as you mentioned, the neighboring, everybody's pretty happy with it, Norton has it, Bardman has it, and it will kind of bring us into the twenty-first century relative to the website, allow us to get a lot more information out in a variety of ways that some of those dinosaurs aren't real fluent with, with the Instagram and Twitter and so on and so forth, so, to get mass communication out. So, it's been, I would say overdue, and they, we took a hard look at it, and this is the company we think that would best suit the city's needs.
Questions, comments?
I thought, and I spoke to you about it, I thought, wow, it seems a crazy amount of money to build a website, but I started looking around, and actually, that's pretty much on par with others, and I just, fascinating that it is that much, but I can't remember about it, I mean, that's pretty much in line with everyone.
And it'll also include the hosting of the website, security, maintenance, support, the whole package.
And this is, this will then be a, was it a three-year contract?
Yes.
With maintenance fees of about five thousand dollars per year, approximately. Any other questions, concerns? Comfortable waving the three on it? We'll move on to whatever I find. Resolution twenty-one R seventy-five, a resolution granting wage increases for certain full-time and part-time union job, non-union job qualifications and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. We just signed contracts with our three bargaining units, they all accepted a two-and-a-half percent increase, and this is to help with that. We're looking at, currently, the administrative assistants make sixteen eighty-one per hour, and the proposal is to give them a two-dollar increase per hour, and that works out to be about a twelve percent increase over, plus overtime. And then with the administrative assistants, that's the administrative assistants, and then for accounting assistant, human resource director, and finance director, we're looking to give them an increase equivalent to a dollar fifty per hour, and based on a fifty-thousand-dollar per year salary, I'm not sure what each person makes of those three, that works out to be a six percent increase when we gave everybody else a two-and-a-half percent. And then would be two-and-a-half percent for the part-time administrative employees. I, you know me, I've got concerns about that.
I get it. Well, here's the situation relative to this group, and it's included in the legislation. We are significantly behind the norm and comparable pay for neighboring cities for administrative assistance. Our survey indicated that Norton, for instance, is at eighteen dollars eighty-three cents an hour, Green's at nineteen dollars forty-two cents, Springfield nineteen dollars forty-three cents, Copley nineteen dollars seventy-seven cents, and Coventry at twenty dollars eighty-four cents, and we have four people working here, a couple of them have been here seven years, who are at sixteen dollars and eighty-one cents. So, what we're trying to do at this point, and I think it's a fair time to do it, given the fact that, you know, the situation we're in financially, you know, we're stable, to try to just bring this group up to par with what I call an industry standard. You know, I think those four people are happy here, but by the same token, there's something that he said, we know how important retention is at this point, and we know how difficult it is to fill positions as well. So, we don't want to lose these people, and it's just in fairness, we'd like to bring them up to a comparable wage rate that's being paid around the rest of the county. The others, the accounting administrative assistant has been here twelve, a total of twelve years, and after twelve years, she's at nineteen dollars forty-four cents. Our zoning is at twenty-three dollars sixty-four cents, the average in the area is about twenty-six dollars, so he's behind. Our HR person has been here thirty-seven years, and is at twenty-four dollars sixty-nine cents, and our finance director, if you take her salary and turn it into an hourly, comes out to twenty-six dollars and six cents. We know that if we go around the state and look at HR directors and finance directors, we'd be talking, if we had to replace these people, probably seventy-five thousand dollars at least, if I look at the comps on that. So, this doesn't bring them anywhere near that range, but it gives them that bump also for that group. So, this is somewhat a remedial measure, and I get it that we want to get to the point where we're talking merit increases, and as you know, we did, we were finally able to adopt for the first time in the city of New Franklin a policy manual for the city of New Franklin, we got that adopted earlier in the year, and we're in the process of performance evaluations, but we really need a second year of that to determine merit. So, that's the thinking behind this, and I'll close it all if you want to go to a second reading on this, and wait till the other members of council are here to have a chance to consider this as well.
Again, you're saying that the big increase was just for four people, and people who have been here for several years.
Exactly.
Would it help if I give a, just kind of comparison for myself, and it goes with the human resources coordinator? My peers in cities around here, at the very least, make twenty to thirty thousand dollars a year more than I do. And so, there's a big discrepancy, a big difference between what I'm paid in similar situations, because any of the cities around here, they make a lot more than I do.
I certainly, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's the same with the human resources coordinator. If you look at the OML surveys, which have all the solid ranges, you'll see that they make considerably more than our HR coordinator, and she's been here thirty-seven years.
And I certainly appreciate your comments, however, just looking at what other cities pay, we're not looking at what their job actually is, we're not looking at what experience or qualifications they are, comparing those. So, in a way, we're throwing out these numbers, but they're apples and oranges unless we have a true comparison. So, you know my feelings on it, I'm not a favor of it, I think we're, we agreed to two-and-a-half percent for everybody else, and now we're looking to give a twelve percent increase, and basically, about a six percent increase, and we even did that for our fire chiefs and police chief and the people up there, two-and-a-half percent. So, I'm not comfortable with this.
And one last shot?
Sure.
We did do equity increases, we did those last couple of years for the police and the fire because they were below trend relative to pay skills, and we know how hard it is to staff those positions. And what we've tried to do historically with the administration department, they've chosen not to unionize, and so, we've tried to keep them on par, perhaps with some cities that do unionize, and one of the things we found is, you know, when we did the joint dispatch, we found out the difference between, you know, what the expectation is with the union as opposed to the non-union. I'm not saying we give people raises to discourage unions, but I say, I'm saying that's sort of another component, that what would these wages be if there was a union representing these folks sitting down at the bargaining table, they'd be talking to these comps also. So, that's just another factor to consider, but I'm very comfortable with going to the second reading and giving you some time to think about it.
I also like to say, too, with how our, the office is doing with the audits and that, coming clean with all the audits after year after year, and you're talking about qualifications, you mean like if they have a college education, that should make more money, or?
Well, whatever the qualifications are, not necessarily that they should make more money, I'm just saying that if we're comparing one position in our city to another position in another city, are the qualifications for those jobs the same, the experience level, whatever city A is looking for versus city B, I mean, if we're going to compare numbers, we need to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples, so that it's the same job, whereas, you know, one city might have more expectations, or as far as experience, education, whatever, than another city, and so, you know, the pay would be different. So, that's all I'm suggesting.
I'm just talking about performance, how they've done through the years, we've got these audits every year, and we're getting awards from the state on their audits, so I'm not sure that the educational part of it is a qualification if they're doing their job and taking care of it. That's just I, so, and I understand.
Anyone else have questions, comments? Are you comfortable with waving the three, or would you rather go to a second reading?
I can do it either way.
Yeah. We'll wait for it. Yeah, we should be in the neighborhood for a while.
Absolutely, okay. And we will close the Finance Committee meeting at six fourteen.
Does anybody have anything else to add to this step?
I wanted to ask a quick about the trails. So, is there anything, any sort of plans or anything that you've seen come up with for the pathway to get from state park through the trail?
The, yeah, the idea is Vanderhoof, that's what we're looking at, and we've talked about that before.
Through the front, I thought so, but I can't remember where that is, like by the road, or?
Yeah, at this point, where the sewer is going to be on, I believe it's on the south side, all right, and the path, and the idea would be to try to sort of partner with them in terms of what they do with the lay of the land, is to put the pathway along that stretch to them on that south side of Vanderhoof, and have a crossover then to the, to the east side of Manchester Road, and line in that sidewalk to make it an all-purpose entryway into the park. So, that was the general idea at this point.
There's more or less is a large sidewalk that you go down Vanderhoof?
Yeah, yeah, well, the Vanderhoof part would be a path, a trail, I don't know if it would be crushed limestone, or whether it would be the, you know, the mulch or whatever, but it would be some kind of pathway on the south side, within the road right away. So, there's no idea of taking property, it's just a matter of, you know, since the sewer's coming up there, and they're going to have to finish it, maybe, you know, save a little bit of money on that part, some of the, they're going to have to move some of the telephone poles, et cetera, so maybe save some money on that kind of thing, and, you know, if everybody thinks it's a good idea, it's one of the things we'll be talking about.
Anything else? All right, we're going to move into our city council meeting, this Wednesday, November third, two thousand and twenty-one, called six eighteen, please stand for it.
In the United States of America, in this republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, for the liberties and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular scheduled meeting of October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Any discussion, comments, any minutes? Hold call, please.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mr. Betterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Sixteen.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move into our public comments. Please keep your comments against the council under four minutes, and give us your name and your address.
I'm thinking they're probably starting to look out that window and saying, are they there? Sharon Reck, seven eight one, Yarun. We continue to have ongoing concerns over the removal of mature mixed woodland at Sisley Park for tennis and pickleball courts. The concern is not the courts themselves, but the site that has been selected. There are four school districts, as you know, represented in New Franklin, the October count for enrollment was just released. Norton has two thousand three hundred and fifty-two students, Northwest one thousand seven hundred and forty-four, Coventry one thousand six hundred and thirty-five, Manchester one thousand two hundred and thirty-eight. The athletic departments of each of these districts were contacted, none have onsite tennis courts, boy, would they love to have them. Northwest doesn't even field team, the kids that do play play at the senior center in town. Norton uses the Columbia Woods Park when they're able to get those courts. Coventry pays Green to use two courts, and the Coventry AD was especially interested in the possibility of having better court access for his team as well. One of our questions, I think, is what happens if land is donated by any of those districts? You know, if Coventry says, hey, we've got three acres here, is the city going to help us put in courts, because they helped do that over next to Manchester Middle School? And that again brings us back to Robbins, which is a really great location for Coventry kids, it's a great location for Manchester kids, it fits that bill in between. I think we need to look and see if this current plan is cost-effective and uses the best use of green space. The mayor has weighed in, he wishes our concerns were raised eight months ago, he doesn't like to cut down trees either, most do, I don't think, but there's been no commitment at all made to revisit this site selection. So, my question tonight for each of the council members is, do you support exploring options for the placement of tennis and pickleball courts that will more fully meet the needs of all New Franklin residents? And if I'm allowed to ask for a response from each of you, I'm not sure if I'm allowed to do that or not. But Mr. Cox, would you support exploring options for the placement of these courts?
Absolutely, we can look at it, but I'm in favor of where they are now and where we want to go.
Thank you. Mr. Hargit?
Same.
Thank you. Mr. Betterman?
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind looking for somewhere else, but I know that property was strictly for that, given to us for that purpose.
Right.
And that we would have to go back, have to go back to the schools who's indicated that they would do it anyhow.
Right.
Which I know you're, I'm sure you're, you're well versed in that, I don't know if you know, but I'm for looking for someone else, somewhere else, but.
Thank you. I did have a conversation with Mr. Hargit at the school board meeting, and he did make a personal apology for his reaction to what I shared here at the meeting, and I think our feeling is, if the schools had the finances to build those courts, they'd build those courts, you know, they wouldn't have come to the city for that. Mr. Hawke, your feeling?
I would be, yes, but I feel like we're getting this project a little bit far gone now. You should have done this earlier.
Right. Mr. Stock?
I'm the same way.
Okay.
It's just, it's, with everything that's there now, that it's a good place in my mind, and we have discussed it for months and months, so.
Okay. I will tell you that I wrote a lot of grants during my tenure as a teacher, that was the only way I ended up getting any money, and because I was science teacher, I wrote a lot of grants to ODNR. And I have spoken to the Nature Works Grant Director, Tim Robinson, he's added the five pages of signatures that we had stating our concerns with that site selected, and I also sent him aerial photographs of each parks, so that he can see what the tree cover is on the various parks, there's literally none except that system. I would like the opportunity to review grant applications that were submitted both to Nature Works and also to Senator Sherrod Brown.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else?
Yes, sir. I'm Mark Sedlock, Grove Road. This goes to the item on the Finance Committee about the resolution granting wage increases. I'm with Mr. Cox. Not as much in terms of educational requirements, but if we're going to compare salaries in different cities, we should also compare the size of the budgets being accounted for, any amount of responsibility in the positions based on the relative populations of the surrounding communities. I'm not one for just giving increases just because so-and-so over there gets paid this, I think they should be merit-based, in my personal opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Brian Yoke, twelve forty-three Vanderhoof Road. I'm very concerned about the possibility of the trail coming through my front yard between the hundred and fifty trails, or hundred and fifty miles of trail within Summit County, the two-and-a-half million people that use it every year throughout the state, even a small percentage of those people biking, hiking, walking from that trail into the state parks or vice versa, state parks to the trail, how many of you guys would like to have just random numbers of people on bikes walking through your front yard? I have small children, we all know that not everybody goes through there with honest means, some of them are nefarious, and therefore, there are some safety concerns to the number of people and the traffic interaction between those individuals and the cars going up and down Vanderhoof, between the number of boats, trucks, trailers, the people coming in and out of their homes with long driveways. I don't think that's a wise choice to put a limestone trail into people's yards, which is going to have to be, because you aren't going to put it in the middle of the road, there's going to have to have space into the right-of-way, which then will eventually be people's yards. In addition to that, if you're putting it on the south side, every mailbox going up and down the street is on the south side, the telephone poles are on the north side. So, there are some currents, my concerns putting that trail there, because I just don't think it's a wise choice for the people that live there to have that, those numbers of people going through their properties, which ultimately is what's going to happen.
All right, thank you. So, we have to take a call.
Tonight's just for, you were here just for to apply for the grant, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sixteen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Ben Cox, eight five five, great drive. The salaries and wages, I've been involved in a number of those different kinds of studies, and I would bring up two things. One is, right now, we're in the great resignation period, a lot of people resigning jobs, getting tired of things, moving on to other things, and a lot of people seeking more work, you know, higher pay. And if someone's equipped right now, I don't care if they only have seven years' experience, try to find someone to be placed up, you know, you might say, small cities should be small salary. That's not necessarily going to hold true when you have to deal with state requirements on auditing and competing and all that. It might require a certain level of knowledge to do that, and you might not find, you might find somebody who's right out of high school who says, oh, I can do it, I can learn it, I'll take a small salary, and then you're going to find yourself five years down the road having major problems, because, you know, what's the requirements for the job? Yes, should be that. Big cities can afford more, but they also have to use more people, more work, you know, number of staff and all that. We need to, when you say Norton, are we comparable to Norton, are we comparable to Barberton, or are we bigger, are we smaller, that's our budget then, but there's going to be a minimum floor you're going to have to consider. Right now, especially, someone quits today, try to find somebody else that's got qualifications, you might have a hard time placing at what you think is a reasonable salary. Is their idea reasonable, maybe substantially higher than yours? That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
My name's Robin Akey, I'm at twelve fifteen Center Road. I had a couple of questions on the Vanderhoof trail that you were talking about tonight that I didn't hear you discuss in the committee meeting. I wasn't familiar of the TASA, if that's the right acronym, T A S A, that's the application that you're going to be filing for the federal funds, the transportation to help fund for this project. It calls for an eighty-twenty percent split in the funding, and I did not see an amount in the legislation as to what you were going to apply for. So, I mean, there could be a big difference, if it's a hundred thousand that you're applying for, that's not that big of a, you know, it's twenty thousand to get to the city, but if it's millions, that's a lot of money that the city has to come up with. And since I wasn't familiar with the program, I went out to AMATS's website today, and it says that their applications for the TASA was between September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, through October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Today's the third, you just now have the legislation for it, you can go out and look up on the website, it says that. So, I mean, we're applying for something when the window for the application is closed, it doesn't make too much sense, and I'm hoping that members of council, you'll look into this before you decide on that tonight. And also, it states in the legislation that if you're going to follow the AMATS, which is the program basically director of those transportation funds to do the road, that AMATS is the program director for our area. When you look at their documentation, you have to follow their procedures for that, they have a specific, application legislation needs to contain the cost of what you're applying for, and it's not in the legislation tonight. So, I would strongly ask that council take time on this before deciding on the Vanderhoof to make sure that, you know, we're following the right procedures, and to find out exactly when that window is open for submitting an application for the federal funds. You also may want to look at that the TASA program, federal-level program, is no longer funded after September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. So, I just, you know, I'm not hearing these questions being asked by council members. I went out and looked it up today over a couple hours of being on the web, and I strongly suggest that you hold off until you start finding some of the answers to these questions that I'm raising. Thank you.
If it's helpful, council, I had those conversations with Josh Slager from GPD, and he has assured me that the window is open for us to make the grant application. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, that the project could be as much as two million dollars, and the city shares- and the city's share will be 20% of that, I mentioned that. And that's something that the city, and I also mentioned the fact that we've had good success in covering those, that type of funding from other sources, but that's something that we'd have to decide if in fact the grant, the grant, if we're successful in, in any grant. Because the next step would be, we decide to accept the grant. So I'm comfortable, we've had, I have full confidence in GPD and Josh Slodin. He's been involved in all of our grant applications. For instance, Vanderhoof Bridge that we got about $800,000 for, just to name one. So he's assured me that we're in compliance and, and, and we have all the information necessary to complete the grant application. Now, time is of the essence in the sense that we'd like to get this in, so I would ask you to consider it tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry. Perry Cross, size 438 Center. I want to congratulate Mayor Robinson on the reelection. I would like to urge council to not take that as approval or the community wanting the plans that I've seen for the city. The plan that shows concentrated housing in a couple of areas. The plan to bring more business in with business corridors. I realize this is a big hand works, but still eighty percent in our last survey of people want to keep New Franklin rural. To the slogan on the report that I saw was, "We grow or we die." Now, to me, if council believes that, if I'm faced with two choices, and I don't like either one of them, I'm looking for more choices. So please, council, keep the citizens in mind, whether they voted or not, no matter which way they voted. I hope you still continue to solicit citizen input at the earliest stages possible of plans. Instead of, well, we're too far along, we can't, you know, take your comments into consideration.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we can go ahead and get started into our three pieces of legislation this evening. Start with, we just have three firsts read and a third pending. Move to Resolution Number 21-R-73, Kelly?
Resolution allowing the mayor to apply for federal transportation alternative set of site, TASA funds programmed by the Afro Metropolitan Area Transportation Study, AMATS, to improve service streets and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. All right, Ms. Jones?
No, I'll make a motion, I'm sorry. Keep hearing me off while I'm doing that, and I'll make a motion, we're waiting for three readings.
Second?
You got a second? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman? Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Harkett?
Yes. All right, make a motion to adopt Resolution 21-R-73.
Second?
You got a second? First and second, further discussion? Again, I have full faith in the mayor and GPD that this is going to be taken care of. And again, if we get the grant, we still got to vote on accepting the grant, and there, you know, so this isn't a done yet, so. You know, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yeah, only with the, no, in fact, it's just the application.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes, what he said.
Mr. Harkett?
Yes. All right, that passes five to zero. Thank you. We'll move to Resolution Number 21-R-74.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Civic Plus for initial design and hosting of the city's website and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to wait the three readings on Resolution 21-R-74.
Please, the second, roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman? Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Harkett?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 21-R-74.
There's a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yep.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Harkett?
Yes. All right, we have passed the six to zero, move to Resolution Number 21-R-75.
A resolution granting wage increases for certain full-time and part-time non-renewal job classifications and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee, and we're going to ask for time on Resolution 21-R-75.
Time requested, time is granted. Our second, third, pending, nothing for us this evening. There you go, there, there we go. All right. Let's see, first of all, I want to welcome the new councilmen who were elected and have a forward working with them. Secondly, I just briefly addressed two issues that came up. And one is the trail, and there's a lot of conversation left on this trail, and I get that, and I appreciate the concerns. The discussions to date, which have been general, would talk about no taking, as I mentioned before. And I get it, all of our yards run to the street, but as we all know, there's a road right of way that exists. And so the, if this ever comes to fruit, it will be in the road right of way. And there's also some preliminary discussion already about buffering, whether to give fences or foliage or some way or another to maintain the privacy of property owners, et cetera. So on that note, as it relates to the trees, I am aware that ODNR has, the issue of the trees has been raised with ODNR, and I respect that. And we are awaiting their decision relative to the grant funding. So I think that might give us some guidance. So I want you guys to know that, and I've spoken to, with them as well, and Ms. Rack wrote a nice letter and included the information that she said, and I had that discussion with them as well. They're taking that under consideration, and they're going to be announcing very shortly whether or not they're going to approve the grant or whether they don't. And I think their decision in that regard might, might give us some direction as to, you know, whether it's appropriate or whether it isn't, in their standards. Wyom is being paved, I think even as we speak. I was down there today, and they're in the process. As a matter of fact, I was at one end of the road, and I was saying, you know, gosh, it's going to get cold here, they better get started. This is, and I got to the other end of the road, and there they were. So it looks like, and the rest of the street's back there as well. So that's happening. The healthcare committee met last Friday and did a final review of the various proposals that we had out there, some of which were the reference-based pricing, self-insured with a network, and fully insured. And it was priced, and we had four different vendors that weighed in with us, and the healthcare committee unanimously decided to pursue a fully insured plan, and to do that with Cornerstone. And to that extent, the fully insured plan was offered by two different brokers, our current broker and Cornerstone. And the pricing is, actually, Cornerstone's pricing on that was a little bit lower, it's going to have to be updated. But it had the additional advantage of bringing that, that business home here to New Franklin. Because they are a local business affiliated with theirs insurance, and the broker herself resides in New Franklin, so it would be nice if that business was here. Now, council, I believe, is going to have to make the final decision on that. We've asked them, and we also have to see what it takes to, when this could happen, how do we untangle from our current contract? So we're investigating all of that right now. And when we have those answers, the particulars of the plan, and right now, the feeling was that it was going to be somewhere in the range of $850,000 to $900,000. Right now, we're a little bit over a million that we're spending with the reference base. So we think there could be initially some cost savings. Naturally, the problem with fully insured is what happens on renewal. But, you know, we've had, from a couple of different brokers, it suggested it might not be as horrible as we think. And we approached it, or considered it from a three-year, okay, what if we did this for three years? And even if we had, we did some math on this, and even if we had 25% increases for year two, and another 25% year three, nobody thinks it would be that high. We'd still average out to about a little bit over a million a year for those three years. And we're done with reference-based pricing, and we have access to all providers, and that's, you know, that problem with access to care was the issue that folks were worried about, so. Once we get to this particulars, we'll take it back to the healthcare committee. Once we have something pinned down, we're bringing it to council on their recommendation. All right, let's see. Tudor House Christmas would be the eleventh event at Tudor House this year. I always like to brighten about that, but that's a big deal. We went from zero to eleven. And we had a lot of debate, we've done that in the house before, and we still have, obviously, there was COVID concerns. And so the committee met, and at this point, we are planning that as a tent event, with some heaters in there, and we think the people can be comfortable, they would dress for it. It's an open house, it would be, it's scheduled for Sunday, December 5th. And we kind of brought it back, because it was an annual for years and years and years. And we revived it three years ago. Two years ago, it was wildly successful, wall to wall. And last year, we couldn't do it. So one of the, one of the comments they made about doing it again this year, and we will be prepared, you know, if somehow there's a crazy spike, or somehow this isn't in the best interest of the community, well, then we'll just have to cancel it. But we're envisioning this as outside. And one of the things that, one of the, yeah, I thought a really insightful comment that one of the, that one of the people made. One of the most fun part about that is the young senators come, and we invite them from all the schools. And they didn't, they didn't get to do this last year, these students, because of COVID. So we thought, you know, it was pointed out, you know, gosh, if we do this, and we're able to do it in a tent, because the parents show up, and the grandparents show up, and the kids are fed. So I don't want to go on and on about that, but we're going to try to make that happen for Christmas. And we'll, and Santa will still be there if we have it, and he'd probably be a no-touch Santa, but that's okay. We can tell up in front of them and tell them what they want, so that's what's going on there. All right, let me see. The water will be going back into the lake on November 15th, so laborers respond accordingly. On a week from tomorrow, Thursday, November 11th, is Veterans Day, and the Ohio Veterans Park will have an event from 6:30 to 7:30, light a candle for the veterans. So we'll be participating, and we invite you, if you're available, if you can, join down there next Thursday from 6:30 to 7:30, one hour event in honor of our veterans on Veterans Day. And lastly, I appreciate the comments, I thank, I thank the voters for the participation. We had, you know, look at these numbers, we have 10,000 registered voters out there, which, as I've mentioned before, calls into question the accuracy of that 14 million, $14,000, 14,000-person census. It's hard to imagine when we only get 4,000 kids out here, but we got 10,000 voters. Last November, 8,300 of them voted. Now, obviously, that was an intense election. Yesterday, 3,000 people voted. And when, it's, when we talk about what we've tried to do here in the city, we really have tried, I'll speak personally, have tried to be transparent, have tried to have community involvement. We've created committees, we talk about things at length. Obviously, we need to do a better job of getting the word out to people, and this new website will help us do that, so that we can, more people will know what we're doing, but we haven't snuck up on anybody with anything. You know, I will tell you that, you know, a lot of the really scary things that people were afraid were going to happen, you know, I want to tell you, and I am telling you, that you can sleep well tonight, because none of those things are going to happen. And you saw the same stuff I had, nobody's going to come take your guns away, nor do they want to. You're not going to see mandatory assessments for water. With what's on the table right now, the only assessments relative to sewer potentially would be with that Manchester Road sewer, and that's still being discussed, hasn't even been decided, and that won't even be in the ground for two years. And you're not going to see high rises, roads cut, without full discussion, without the, you know, without, you know, buy-in from the stakeholders, which, as I think you've known, we've tried to do, okay? And those concerns people had about development, we had a meeting last October where we invited all the property owners in, all the stakeholders, all the current businesses. And we told them exactly what we were doing and how we did the water, et cetera. So we will continue to do that, and nobody's going to get surprised. But my feeling is this, you know, we had 8,300 people voted last November, and 3,000 of them voted yesterday. And that tells me that there's 5,300 people out there that are pretty comfortable with what we're doing, because they know where the polling locations are. And if they felt we were going in the wrong direction, I do believe they would have come out and polled us that. So I just want to reassure everyone that we're going to continue with transparency, community involvement. We've had it successfully, we've had it great four years. We had a $4 million water project that didn't cost anybody a nickel. You know, we created a joint dispatch center. We have 11 events at the Tudor House where we had none. We picked up five acres of land for free. We preserved the Grill School as a park for those residents over there. We reopened the West Side Fire Station. We got a $900,000 grant to do the Vanderhoof Bridge. We lobbied Norton and the Summit County until they finally agreed to fix the Humble Road Bridge. It's really been one thing after another, and we've had the support of council to do that. And we haven't done anything that's adversely affected the rural character of the city. And I don't tell you that to, hey, campaigning's over, I just want you to be comfortable. I don't want people to have needless anxiety about what might happen, because we talk about it all right here, and that's what we'll keep doing. So I appreciate the support of the voters. To that end, I will say, we're going to put out requests for proposal for a update to the comprehensive plan. And I'll get, we'll be getting those out very soon, and I hope to get those back, you know, within less than 30 days or so. Because I would like to put, you know, move along with that, get pricing on that. And, and I, it would include, and we'll put this in the proposal, the same things that were done in 2002 to 2004. There were community meetings, we went out to all four quadrants, and had meetings, not just here, but out there. We had plenty of discussion, it was all done openly, and we ended up, we had a community survey that went out to every resident about what you want to see, and where you want to see it, and what the ideas are. So we know it's time for that, and we're going to get that process moving as well, because that's the kind of input we want to have before we make decisions about anything, including trails, et cetera. And I think the timing is right for that, so that's, that's, that's on the radar, and we'll be bringing that to you probably as soon as, well, a couple meetings in a row. That's what I have, thanks.
Right, also, I've been up there 17 years, I think duty's the one that's been here, and that was most disinformation I've received in an election ever. I mean, it's always been, only ones opting in and all the other ones that I'm sure everybody else has been in. So there was a lot of misinformation, so thanks for putting that up, Paul.
All right, Finance, two?
Well, we're starting to gear up for the end of the year. We're into the part of the year where we have to do lots of special pays for our unions, and so we're working on that. In fact, I'm helping work on payroll this, this week, because Diane's ill, but hopefully she'll be back tomorrow to help out, finish out. So it's going to get busy in there, but if you need anything, as always, let us know. People out, out about in the city, if you need information, please come up to our window. We'll be happy to help you, get you whatever. We have lots of people call us about income tax, and they, some come and get forms, and some need help with a penalty, and we certainly help a lot, as many people as come and see us. So we're always available for whatever you need, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Susan. Old Business? New Business? All right, anybody have any questions for us, if anything that we raised at the meeting this evening?
Couple comments on the trail. One, I'm not sure if it's gonna be a five-foot sidewalk or a multi-purpose trail of eight feet, but I heard you mentioned something about chips. I wouldn't recommend like a wood, I don't know if you're talking wood or what you're talking, but keep in mind, this is gonna be crossing people's driveways, and it's gonna pull them out, they're gonna create trenches essentially by tires, you're just gonna create, it needs to be something a little more substantial. Another thing is an education process. I mean, you're talking that this is one in the road right of way through, but a lot of these roads around here have a fifty or sixty-foot right of way, so you're talking thirty feet from the center of the road. And when you've got a ten, twelve-foot lane, now you're talking, you know, twelve, fifteen feet in somebody's yard, what they assume is their yard, not realize it's a right of way. And then you're gonna put a trail through there with a probably two-foot grass strip between the trail and the street to buffer. So, I mean, these are gonna kind of what people think is their yard, and I think a good, good education process, let people know where the right of way is, what it looks like, and it gets them some buy-in on that, would go a long way.
The Civic? I'm sorry.
The Civic Plus, I'm very familiar with them. I'd ask that we maybe look at, add one of the things into the city website is a project map, something that goes maybe three, four years out, or, you know, we can clip on it and see what is actually on, on the books coming up, and that's what we have where I, where I work. It's very helpful, you put the contact information on there, who's kind of overseeing the project, what it's about, maybe if there's any kind of sketch drawings or anything like that, just some more information so people can get, you know, ahead of these things before it's basically in their backyard and they hear the equipment, clear and all stuff.
If this thing isn't a couple months, you're gonna be up there soon. It's a little different than sitting out there, I'm gonna let you know that.
I'm very worried. I've been dealing with this for a long time.
It's gonna be a pleasure to have you up here, but it's.
But it's a lot to have between today and.
Yeah, but with the grant, now, there ain't, the two things you spoke of, there is not a whole lot going on in the next couple months, but that's a good point, that the new website, we're gonna be able to do a lot more to reach out to people, and so it's gonna work out real good. So, all right, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
One question, just, you said you were talking about the healthcare committee and moving from being self-insured to having this, this coverage. I'm just curious, I'd like to get it out there in the interest of transparency, what kind of coverage and deductibles the people that are covered under the city's healthcare have that we, as taxpayers, are paying for? I'm just curious.
We can provide, I don't have it in front of me. We'll certainly provide it with you.
Could you make it available like on the city's website or someplace, because I think a lot of people in the city might be interested in what kind of coverage we're paying for?
Sure.
Thank you. Oh, and one other, one other item, too, and there's, you know, I was watching this New Franklin Voice prior to the election, lots of stuff getting thrown around, lots of people talking about lots of different things. And I usually go to council meetings, but forgive me, my, at my advanced age, I sometimes forget some things. What is the current bid or what we're planning on paying for the tennis courts and pickleball courts that we're gonna be putting in?
The proposal came in about nine hundred thousand dollars, but we're gonna rebid it, because we, we bid it at a time that wasn't advantageous to pricing, and then we're trying to break out a few of the components as well. Okay, great. Anything else, anybody? All right, executive session, Paul?
Nope. All right, I'll make a.
Mr. Slodow, real quick before you adjourn, I just wanna thank everybody for coming out. You know, we have plenty of people here, and I hope you all come out again in two weeks and continue to come and, and, or your friends. That'd be great. So we appreciate you all being here.
All right, thank you. Make a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
All right. Let's have it. Next meeting, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, we start our committees at six, and get right into our meeting. There we go, but thank you.